Good evening, everyone. It is now, um, six fifty-nine. Our meeting starts at seven, so I'm asking everyone to put their phones on silent or vibrate, whichever you please. I think we'll, are we still waiting on the recording? I know we have the recorder up here. Do you have the recorder?
He wants to go around.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. It is now June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. This year is going by really quick. And it's now seven P.M. I welcome you all to our East Point City Council Regular Meeting that we have, um, first and third Tuesdays of the month, so welcome to some of you who have never been here, that see an audience. Before we start our meeting, you always start with an invitation, and then we leave that up to our Pledge of Allegiance. And I ask you all to stand and join me for that, and our person that has been doing it for the last couple of years is our Mayor, Lieutenant, Sir Lucido.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dear God, we continue to ask for your blessings and guidance for the city of East Point. Please watch over all of our residents, both while we are at home or out traveling on the roads. We pray that as the summer continues, that we will take the opportunity to better get to know each other and take the time to turn neighbors into friends. That is what we need to build our community and to keep our city strong. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, for that prayer, and everyone for joining us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, we're gonna go to a part that we all should be happy about, is we're gonna be swearing in our new City Manager, Ms. Mariah Walton, by our Honorable Judge, Ms. Galen. So we're gonna start that right now. She's gonna step down, so it's for my, and if the council wants to step down too, it's up to you all to join in, but I'm welcoming you all to this event.
Well, let me first say I'm very proud to be here. Um, I've been able to watch Mariah from when I was on civil service and then, uh, as Deputy, um, City Manager and now as City Manager. So, Mariah, I'm very proud of you. I think you'll lead our city in a good direction. You have a great demeanor. Um, you know how to, to work with people. You, um, are competent and qualified and very happy to see you in this position. So with that said, can you please raise your right hand? I, please state your name.
I, Mariah Walton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of East Point.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of East Point.
And to endeavor to secure and maintain.
And to endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the City of East Point.
Of the affairs of the City of East Point.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And to perform the duties of the Office of City Manager.
And to perform the duties of the Office of City Manager.
With the City of East Point.
With the City of East Point.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
We have, uh, Ms. Rachelle here to take a photo. Or someone else.
You wanna do it?
You wanna do it? Cause I know the judge probably has to leave, so we're gonna do it.
Thank you.
Yes, I may have to leave, I'm a busy person.
And then we're gonna swear in Kim Holman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mariah. Congratulations.
You know what? So we can do it all together. Uh, we're gonna separate it. We also have our newest, um, act, um, yes. Kim Holman will be our Assistant City Manager as well, so she's gonna get sworn in today as well with our judge, and we're gonna do all the pictures together. How do that sound?
Very good.
Okay. Congratulations, both of you.
Kim, likewise, I'm glad to see you in this position, and I know you'll do a great job. With that, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Kim Linderjohn.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution for the State of Michigan. And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of East Point. That I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
That I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
Honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the City of East Point.
Of the affairs of the City of East Point.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And to perform the duties of the Office of Assistant City Manager.
And to perform the duties of the Office of Assistant City Manager.
With the City of East Point.
With the City of East Point.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So Judge, if you will, um, I'm gonna have you take a picture with both of them together. Oh, yeah, and so, um, and then me, me and you with them, and then all the council and staff if you want to as well. You gotta get some rest. You can do it right here. Can they all counsel to? Thank you for being with us, Your Honor. Have a good night. Yes, ma'am. And if some of you didn't know, that is our Judge here in the City of East Point, Ms. Galen. Thank you for being here. And another, um, congratulations for our newest City Manager and also our newest Assistant City Manager. We are very, uh, diverse here in the City of East Point as we have hired, if I'm not wrong, our first African-American City Manager here in the City of East Point, and we have three women. So you got a mayor, you got a City Manager, and Assistant City Manager, so let you know we are open to diversity and inclusion here, and I'm happy to be a part of that. So moving right along to our roll call.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curley?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Here.
Councilmember Lucido?
Here.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, here. Thank you. Um, next is approval of the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve the agenda, but I would also like to first table item I, which is discussed in a possible approval of proposed amendments to City Council bylaws. And I'd like to add in item L, approval to amend budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two year to add a line item for the Parks Commission for the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Council. I'd like to support that.
I got one question before we, um, should we, that second, the item you're adding, discuss that during unfinished business A? When we approve the?
Um, no, cause I want, we have to add it to this year's budget, so this is the upcoming year. Of the twenty-two, twenty-three, we have to amend the twenty-one, twenty-two budget because they're gonna pay.
I think this is already paid for.
Yeah, um, this is for the event for the Parks Commission?
Oh, this current?
That, that's that one, it is this current year budget. Amend the twenty-one, twenty-two. No.
Oh.
The last budget, to amend the last budget.
Sorry about that?
That's okay.
Got any motion? Okay, motion and support, thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Now we have the hearing of the public. The hearing of the public is now open. How this works for some of you that are new, um, you get three minutes, and you get to talk about, uh, any, having opinion, issues, concerns, or you might just like everything that we've been doing, uh, since we've been here, and you wanted to say, "Job well done." We take those two. So, um, after you say your name, residency, or if you're a visitor, then I'll start the timer. We ask you to be, uh, respectful, because we have people of all backgrounds, ages, and, um, et cetera, listening, so we wanna respect those that are listening. So please, the hearing of the public is now open.
Karen Moragen, East Point resident. Um, two things, um, that are very near and dear to my heart, obviously, are the animals. Um, for those of you who've known me coming to these meetings for quite some time, um, you know, it's a fair statement for me to say that my life truly revolves around the welfare and well-being of all animals. I notice we don't have, like the other cities, Warren and Saint Clair shores, they have their own Animal Welfare Commission, and I feel very strongly, um, about it that we should also have that in East Point. Um, this is for the protection of all animals, you know, not just cats and dogs, uh, because people have, you know, other types of, uh, rescue animals that are, they're family members. Um, but it's also about, you know, protecting our wildlife, um, that also live here in the city. Um, there's a lot going on that unfortunately people don't understand what to do when it comes to wildlife if they're injured. Um, and a lot of times people don't understand, are they truly abandoned or not? Um, for instance, uh, not very many people understand that when it comes to a possum, when you see the babies, and that is the one exception to the rule. If, um, you don't see mama around, you need to find a rehabilitator immediately. Um, other wildlife, you typically can keep an eye on them for twenty-four hours to see, you know, is mama, you know, hi, is mama hiding so that, um, the predators aren't drawn to the babies? Um, so that's something I'd really like to see East Point offer, um, you know, for all of the residents, that we have an Animal Welfare Commission to protect both the companion animals and the wildlife. The second, um, area that's very near and dear to me are the elderly and protecting them, especially with, um, dementia patients, and I guess I will just have to speak about that on another time. And just one quick comment, the last time, at our last meeting, some man was going on about, you know, he's anti-abortion. Remember, as women, it's our right to choose what we do with our body. The government get, does not get to tell us what to do with our bodies. Men are not capable of giving birth.
Thank you.
We do. Thank you.
If you want to add, you have additional three minutes. At the end, you know how it works.
I know, but I have to leave, so.
Okay. Have a good day.
Aunt Thomas, an East Point resident. I wanna say good job about the affordable housing over in Aaron Park. I made a visit over there a couple of times, and I noticed something that kinda disturbed me. It's a lot of, um, children that live over there, but it was a lot of speeders over there, and there's no speed limit signs posted for the safety or no children playing signs over there. So I would like the City Council to consider a discussion on putting speed limit signs posted up there and/or maybe speed bumps, because it was people just zoom, 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 and, and it put our little, our future voters at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Say none. The first hearing of the public is now closed. Thank you to all that participated. Next is the approval of minutes.
Madam Mayor, I'd move that we receive and file the minutes of the regular meeting of June seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Support?
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
The next item is the scheduled hearing for the ARPA funds, and we're gonna open that up right now. Would anybody, uh, like to speak on that right now? So while we're, you're waiting to talk about that, I'm gonna let our, um, City Finance Director talk about, a little bit about that, for those that don't know what that is, and so they can have some type of, everyone doesn't go on the website and know what these things are, and if they do, they probably wanna, uh, a brief summary of what, uh, idea of what we can or cannot do with them. If that's okay with you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, the ARPA funds are the American Rescue Plan Act funds, uh, that came out of Washington. Uh, the City of East Point will be receiving a total of about three point two million dollars. There are specific areas that the money can be spent on. The, um, the first section is, uh, for COVID-nineteen activities or negative economic impact. Um, so there can be uses for mitigating COVID-nineteen. Uh, there can be some use for, uh, some payroll benefits, uh, within the public sector. There's some impacted industry options. A lot of those categories, there are programs up at the county or the state level, that have already been put in place for those kind of activities. There are some behavioral healthcare needs as an option, uh, but again, that's also being handled up at the county level. Another category is premium pay for eligible workers. Uh, it can be used to pay, um, bonuses basically to public safety that worked throughout the pandemic. It can be used for some private activity, uh, food production, facilities, grocery stores, things like that. There's a lot of hoops those companies have to jump through to make that happen, but that is an option. The other category is for government services to the extent of the loss of revenue. There's a calculation that is done, even though they put out a ruling that any community receiving less than ten million dollars can automatically assume it's all revenue loss, and we don't have to actually do a calculation. Um, but that would be used, uh, within the city to, uh, basically continue operations. What's the other one? Investment in water, sewer, and broadband. Uh, we could use that for some of the lead service line replacements. Broadband, if we didn't have broadband within the community, we could have that structured that's more for, really geared more to the rural areas that don't necessarily have Vow and Comcast and AT&T sitting in their backyard. Uh, but that is an, an option for some of the spending. Uh, there's a summary out on the table. If anybody saw it and picked it up or didn't see it, you can go grab one. But that, that's kind of a synopsis of what the uses are.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Before I close it out, I wanted him to do a, a brief synopsis of it. If you didn't get that paperwork of what we can and cannot use it for, so if you still would like to speak on some ideas where you would like that money to be put into, to use for our community, this is the time to talk about that right now. Okay, saying no one wants to talk about anything, I guess they're gonna leave it up to some of our ideas. And, um, did councilwoman talk about anything right now? I wanna make sure I open it up before I close it off.
No, Madam Mayor, I think that it was kind of discussed, uh, during budget, what we were going to, uh, use it for.
Okay, I wasn't here at budget, so that's why I wanted to open it up to, to here, and then a lot of different ideas came about on social media and things like that, what we can and cannot use it for. So moving right along, cause I know some of you all have a lot to do. We're gonna go to our next item. To unfinished business. Item A, the second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-two dash one-two-two-one and ordinance to provide for the annual appropriations for the City of East Point, McComb County, Michigan, for the fiscal year commencing on July first, twenty-twenty-two, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Madam Mayor, if I may, really quick, um, there is one thing I would like to, before doing second reading, I don't know how council feels about this, but I would like to do the second reading, but with one change, and that is to, um, add sixty-five thousand dollars into the parks budget to do the repair work at, um, for the fencing at Memorial Field.
I would also like to add to that too, and add thirty-two thousand dollars for the, a full-time public information to replace the part-time position. And what this would do is, the current position is part-time, it limits the hours of the employee to be able to work, and this position will ideally manage all A.V., uh, for meetings, manage all social media and community engagement initiatives, um, help with grant writing, um, help with building the business community as well as a liaison. So numerous amount of things that the city could use to help improve our city, um, make that connection with our businesses, um, our Neighborhood Watch, um, and market our city a little bit better.
Madam Mayor, point of order?
Yes, sir.
Can we look at one amendment at a time, uh, for budget? Make it easier, at least, uh?
Okay.
And I, I guess, so?
I'll make the motion to do the second reading and, um, with the adding thirty-five thousand or sixty-five thousand into the parks budget?
And just one que, is this a motion to just add that in right now or add and, uh,
Well.
adopt the whole, uh, budget?
I will make the motion to, well, I don't know.
You, you wanna add sixty-five thousand to repair the fence, is that correct?
Yes, at Memorial Field.
Okay, well, um, with the second reading, and reason we have a second reading because, in fact, we wanna, may wanna add something. Is that not correct?
No, that's, that's correct, uh, Councilmember Curley.
So I, I, I think your motion would be in order, um, the motion as it was read by the mayor and just, uh, and adding an additional sixty-five thousand dollars for the repair of the fences at Memorial Field. And then we'll vote on that and then take the other addition that the mayor had.
There, there would be a first and a second, then if somebody wanted to.
Yep.
Amendment, uh, to that motion.
So, so, yeah, so that'll, that'll be my motion to, um, give second reading and adopt ordinance number twenty-one, twelve, dash twelve-twenty-one, but with the amendment to add sixty-five thousand dollars into the parks budget for the fence repairs that need to be done at Memorial Field.
I have a quick question, Councilwoman. With the sixty-five thousand dollars, that was, was that budgeted as, I mean, bid it out? Or how did you get, come up with this figure?
So, um, rare, yes, there has been bids out for this already.
Okay.
Um, this was something that Rare originally talked about picking up. Um, but after speaking with some of the Rare Board members, ultimately, they would rather save that money to start saving their extra money through Rare to do like a bigger project in the city in a couple of years, like maybe like a splash bet at Kennedy, instead of doing these minor repairs and have the city take on the responsibility of doing the repairs in the park. So that's kind of where I'm coming from with the, uh, amendment.
Do you have any, um, pictures or anything of how it looks?
I do not, but we talked about it. Um, I believe that Mr. Marucci had it on our agenda a few months ago, if I'm not mistaken.
He did. He actually had it on, I think, the second meeting in January, so it was some time ago.
We had the information then, with the pictures.
How did it look? Was it?
So their, their main thing is that they can't use the, the baseball diamonds there because of the fence damage there, and then there's some da, fence damage that is actually like dangerous, and they're worried about like kids getting hurt on it.
Okay.
So Rare can't use those fields, so we can't bring any baseball to East Point because of the safety concerns at Memorial Field that they're built.
Okay, thank you.
I will second the amendment motion.
Thank you. Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Um, in addition to that, the second reading is to add a full-time position of thirty-two thousand dollars to replace the part-time position of, which is now our, um, Public Information Officer, so that we can have her do, or he, we don't know who that may be, to manage all A.V. for meetings and manage all social media and community engagement initiatives, as well as assist with grants, and also help with businesses and be the liaison to the City Manager. And economic, uh, well, Economic Director is now our Assistant City Manager now, so we got all that in one noun too. So, um, putting all these positions in one role really saves the city a lot of money and helps us move our city forward. So, um, I'm gonna add that to thirty-two thousand dollars.
Mad, Madam Mayor, point of order on this?
Yes, sir.
Um, we voted on making that position full-time from part-time at the budget session already. We've already voted on this.
Yeah, but since I wasn't here, I can always, I can bring it back, correct? Or I can, well, since it's the second, second reading, we're just adding stuff on, right? Do I have that?
I suppose you could, but if it's already part of, uh?
Cause it was, it was, it was two-two, I believe. It wasn't?
I don't recall, I don't recall whether it passed or not.
It, it failed.
Oh, it failed?
Yeah, it was three-one, I believe.
Two to two. It was two to two. I wasn't here.
Two to two still? Yes, two, if it was a tie vote, it did not pass.
Yeah, um, was that at the first reading or was that just during?
That was during the budget.
That was just during the budget.
Well, does, um, somebody from the administration, raise your hand, what was the vote? Was it, you said it was two to two, or was it three to one, or was it four to nothing? Somebody should have a record.
I was there that day. I believe it was. I wa, I know I wasn't there that day, so.
It was two-two.
It was two-two.
So if it fell, I, I should be able to bring it back up, right, on the table? Reconsideration, or tell me how that works?
Administration is telling me that the, the vote was a tie vote, so therefore it did not pass.
Okay.
And so, um, there's a time period that, uh, that, there's a waiting period unless someone who was, uh, making the motion wants to bring it back, but in this case, you would have to wait that time period that's in the currently in the bylaws.
But was the motion to not include it, or was the motion approved for the City Manager's budget just without it? I guess we'd have to verify in the minutes. I don't know that the actual language.
I don't spec, I remember the specifics on that.
Yeah, so if it didn't state specifically not to have the Public Information Officer full-time in the motion, then that would still leave it open for the mayor to make her motion. Is that correct?
Yes, I guess that's a. Yes, I guess that's a, yeah, I believe that's be the case. I just don't recall what the minutes say on that topic.
May even make you the city manager slash lawyer too.
I think, um, yeah, I don't think the, from what I recall, the motion didn't say to exclude it. It just, um, we made, brought a motion forward to make it a full-time position and then it tied on the vote two-two. But we, but the final motion did not exclude it. It wasn't stated that we are omitting it from the city manager's, uh, budget.
Yeah, to be precise, I would have to take a look at the actual minutes just so we know exactly what the motion was.
Okay. How do we do that? Because this is the second reading right now. Yeah, can we take, yeah.
We could take a break.
Let's take a, a brief break so you can review that real quick. Everyone, all right, we're gonna take a, a five to, how many minutes do you need, Ms. Albright? No more than ten. Yes, we want to take a ten-minute break. You guys, please bear with us.
Also?
The meeting is back in session. Thank you all who came back and those who had to leave, I understand. Um, we are back talking about unfinished business and I want to know what you came up with, Mr. Albright.
Yes, how'd I do for time?
You did really good for time.
Thank you, Mr. Albright. According to the, uh, special meeting minutes from May tenth, twenty twenty-two, under, uh, section J, City Manager slash IT slash Personnel, there was a motion by Councilmember Baker, seconded by Councilmember Curly to change the Information Officer from part-time to full-time. Uh, the A's were Baker and Curly, the N's were DeMonico and Lucido. Due to the fact that it was a tie vote, the motion did not pass. In looking at the, uh, section under the city bylaws that talks about resolutions to reconsider or rescind, it indicates, after council has decided a matter, a period of not less than six months shall be required before a new application for relief. A motion to reconsider or a motion to rescind can be made to council on the same matter unless a member of the voting majority on the previously decided matter requests said matter be placed on the council agenda and the council adopts a motion to rescind or reconsider previously decided matter. Technically wasn't a, a voting majority for somebody to do that because it was a tie vote. So based on that, based on that, the fact that that's not specifically provided for, I, I think that, uh, that motion could come up for a vote tonight. The council also has the option under a catch-all that states that, um, let's see. Under, uh, K, uh, Rule eleven amendment or suspension of the rules, these rules, meaning the rules of, or the bylaws of the city council, including the rules of parliamentary procedure that the council follows, may be amended or temporarily suspended for a specific purpose by a majority vote. So the council could vote to suspend, uh, the rules if in fact that bylaw is applicable. Vote and then if there was a, a, a vote of majority, then address that motion regarding the Information Officer. So it'd be, it'd essentially be two steps if the council wishes to do that.
So your recommendation then would be to, uh, make a motion to sus- suspend the rules? That would probably be the smoothest path to go to?
Yes.
All right, then, Madam Mayor, moving this along, I would, I would move that the council suspend the rules in order to, uh, proceed with the, um, additional motion on the floor.
Second that.
Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Councilmember Lucido?
No.
So, under, going back to unfinished business, we're gonna add thirty-two thousand dollars to provide a full-time position for our Public Information Officer to replace the part-time position allocated for thirty-two thousand dollars.
Is that, are you making a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'm making the motion, I'm sorry.
Mayor can make motions or no?
Our bylaws do allow the mayor to make a motion, yes.
Okay, then I'll, I'll support that motion.
Madam Mayor, really quick, um, just, I just want to clarify. I mean, I know we discussed this during budget, obviously very in-depth, but, um, my biggest concern, I mean, I think, um, we, Public Information Officer is important, but I do know that this year, the only reason why we were able to balance our budget is because of our funding and moving forward in the, in the future. We're not gonna be able to balance our budget because we're not gonna have those funds. So I just hated to create a position that long-term was gonna have to exist and be, we would have to pay for by obviously cutting from somewhere else. And I think that we don't have like extravagant services already in the city, so that's the reason for my vote, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. I think we just lost the Economic Development, right? Since we have one with the, so can that be replaced as funding, going to that?
It's definitely something that we can look at.
Okay, because we lost a position, now we're adding a full-time position, so...
So, real quick, so are, can we amend that motion then to, um, eliminate the Economic Development position? Out of the budget, because I believe it's in our budget right now, so we...
You're asking me to amend my motion?
That would change, that would change my opinion on this motion if we were removing the position of Economic Development Manager.
I, I would not amend it unless our city manager, is, is that your recommendation? Are, are you recommending that we eliminate that position?
Um, it's not something that I've actually spent time on or to verify. It's also duties that we'd have to make sure are reassigned, so it would take time to ensure that the services could still be done with the staff that we have with the addition of the employee and then also putting that together with a job description that would be appropriate. So it'd be hard to make that decision just on the fly, but it's certainly something that we could take into review.
Councilwoman, what do you think about that?
Well, I mean, we, we're obviously voting on this tonight, so I have to go with the information that we have tonight, so...
You have to go with what?
The information that we have tonight, so I, I have to vote with the information we have tonight.
Well, okay, um, city manager says she can't make a recommendation or decision on eliminating that position tonight. And if we table the mayor's, um, motion to our next meeting, there's only gonna be four of us at the next meeting and it's gonna be the same vote, two to two. And the motion dies for lack of support. So we can either swing with it tonight, and if we do, it'll have to wait six months unless we have a suspend of rules again, but maybe in the next, maybe in the next two weeks, someone, someone on the no side could change their mind, I don't know. I'm not twisting any arms, I never would, would I?
I think we should go ahead and, um, continue with the motion since it's already on the floor with adding this. And, um, when she does the further research, we can move along with that.
I, I'm, I cough for the motion.
Can we restate the motion then and who motioned and seconded?
Oh, I made the motion to add thirty-two thousand dollars to the budget for a full-time Public Information Officer.
And who seconded that?
I did.
And you'll give us those, the information about if we, what we need and what we don't need as our city manager? Thank you. Motion in support, please call the roll.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Councilmember Lucido?
No.
Moving right along, before we, uh, move along to reports from administration, did anyone want to add, subtract anything at this moment under unfinished business since we're talking about the budget?
Well, Madam Mayor, it was my understanding those, uh, we voted on the two amendments and then there'd be a final, uh, vote on the, the full budget basically at that point then.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, I added the second reading into my motion.
Okay, yeah, I...
Me too.
So then, okay, that was, I was trying to clarify that and it was, that was not my understanding. I guess if we're doing that, I just wanted to say I was going to vote against the full motion because I still think that our water bill is too high. And that was basically the only comment I was going to make and I think unless anyone thought otherwise, I think the, um, it would still pass, so...
Well, we didn't, we didn't increase water rate, just the two percent for the SC right this year?
Oh, I know, no, just overall, no, I, uh, yep, I understand. So that's all, yep, then let's continue then.
We, we had, fine, it lies that, because I did the second reading and Councilwoman did the second reading, so we can move right along, correct? Is that clear?
Are you good with it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, moving right along, thanks everyone for that. Reports from administration, starting with our city, uh, ma, city manager, Ms. Walton.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, we had a promotion ceremony for the police department this week. Uh, we promoted Sergeant Ignis, uh, and then also welcomed Officer Bandu to our East Point family, so very excited to have them, um, Ignis continuing into command and then Officer Bandu joining us. Uh, we have a Clean City Initiative this Saturday on the twenty-fifth at ten AM. Uh, we're starting at DPW. It is said to be quite warm, so dress appropriate, um, and we'll certainly see you there. Um, our mask requirement, uh, per CDC, we are in a low-risk level. Uh, so council, as you can see, is not wearing masks and then all of the boards and commissions are not required at this time, but again, if you're comfortable or more comfortable with that, you're more than welcome to. Um, an update on elections, again, we sent out over nine thousand six hundred AV applications, uh, last month and we'll be mailing a lot of those out, uh, on June thirtieth. Uh, the last day for absentee ballots to be mailed out is July twenty-ninth. Uh, and the last day to request them in person is August first at four PM. That's prior to our close, we do close at four-thirty. Uh, so if you are gonna request in person, it'd be August first at four PM. Also, on a personnel side, we have Battalion Chief Kirk Lee. He served our community for nearly twenty-four years and he'll be retiring at the end of the month, so we thank him for all of his service. And last but certainly last least, I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Kim Homan. Uh, she was promoted officially today to our Assistant City Manager. Uh, she has served this community with the utmost integrity and dedication. While we all certainly know a lot of the stuff that you do internally with DDA, Planning Commission, ZBA, tax-reverted properties, I could go on for hours. Um, a lot of people are not aware that you also take a lot of time, uh, in your personal time to still dedicate yourself to East Point. Uh, catching you on a Saturday, weeding the DDA, uh, in the children's garden, dedicating to the nonprofits here in East Point. We are so incredibly lucky to have you a part of our team and interested in continuing to serve our team. Um, and I'm so excited to have you as the Assistant City Manager.
Oh, nice.
And Mayor, that is the end of my report. If council has any questions, I can certainly answer those.
Council?
Madam Mayor, one comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, Ms. Walton, uh, I'd like to object to GFL again here because I continue to get complaints that yard waste and, or, yeah, yard waste and recycling are both ending up in garbage trucks still, mixed with the garbage. Many, many complaints on that still. We, of course, invited GFL out last year. They said they would, uh, take a look at it and I guess they're refusing to even meet with us. I think our attorney was supposed to meet with their attorney and they're refusing to, is what I understand. So I would just like to, I guess, uh, object about that on behalf of everybody that's reached out and I've seen it with my own eyes and plenty of other people have.
Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Item B, our, for our Finance Director Report, Mr. Blom.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, the only thing I have is I sent an email out earlier today related to a beautification commission payment. I've had conversations before the meeting and clarified a few things, so I am good on that unless any member of council wishes to, uh, pipe in.
Well, I actually want to add to that, uh, not, um, that subject, but it's somewhat, um, near to it. Now, I want to know how much money did I have, have left over for my education fund? And if you...
Do not know specifically, I'd have to go look.
Right, and when you find out, I want to know, because I know we're taking, uh, city money and donating it to the urban seed. I want to know, can I take my education money that's left over and donate it to the East Point High School Scholarship Fund?
Uh, the, the discussion had was that we were not, it was not an actual donation. It was spending money with a group that was beautifying the city at the urban seed. So it was not an actual donation. Uh, a donation of funds would have to be approved by council, which is kind of where I was thinking originally and looking for direction. But that's been clarified, as far as any leftover funds, it would have to be a council decision.
Okay. When you get a chance, can you tell me the total and I'll bring that back to council and see if I can do, uh, give it to the school for a scholarship fund for any seniors that's graduating from that high school.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone, for Finance Director?
Actually, I have a question. Um, so I, you probably don't have this information either, but maybe for our next meeting, I would like to get some data on the divdat machine outside, like how often it's being used. I know that, not including like the online system, because you just feel paid. I know that, not including like the online system, because you just feel paid the bill through BSNA, but just, uh, the actual machine outside. Um, I like that, the idea and the concept of it, but I don't know. It's kind of weird. It beeps all the time.
It doesn't seem to like the heat too much either.
No, no, it does not. So I'm just wondering, like, I mean, I don't know. It just, it doesn't seem like pleasing when you're walking up and you just hear this machine beeping every time we come to city.
We do see a lot of people using it after hours, uh, and I can get some statistics on that.
Yeah, I, I would just like a, like a little bit of an update for that. That'd be great. Thanks.
Um, I think, uh, it was a, a resident talking about something like the divdat, but it was something that you can use at the court system or the police department to pay fines for tickets?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple options. Actually, divdat could handle the, uh, the court information. We were waiting to see how it worked out at the city hall before we proceeded with that. Uh, there is another, I forgot what it's called, like Gov Business or something like that that has kiosk that a lot of the courts do use.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for our finance director? Thank you, Mr. Blom. Next is our city attorney, Mr. Albright.
Good evening, again, Madam Mayor, members of council. In light of, uh, the several discussion items on our new business, I do not have, uh, much of a report section, uh, this evening. Uh, but I would like to take this time to just, uh, and I know I've already done so, but just publicly recognize and congratulate Ms. Walton on the title of city manager. And I just found out, uh, this afternoon with, uh, Ms. Homan, and I know I extended a phone call to her, but congratulations, uh, Ms. Homan, uh, in your new title. Thank you. And that's all I have. Madam Mayor, I have to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like to know what's going on as far as the approval of the medical marijuana facilities? And what, how long would that be done, and what's going on with that?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, presently, there are three applicants who were denied, uh, based on incompleteness. And those applicants have filed appeals with the Macomb County Circuit Court, one of which was, has already been denied by the Circuit Court. Uh, they have appealed that action to the Michigan Court of Appeals. Uh, another applicant, uh, their application was deemed insufficient because it did not meet the setback requirements, uh, under the city zoning code. They have, rather than pursue an action with the Macomb County Circuit Court, they have, uh, requested an appeal before the city's hearing officer. That date has not been set for the hearing, but the parties have come up with a briefing schedule. The city's brief is actually due this Friday. Um, and then, uh, within twenty-one days after that, the, uh, the applicant that will file their brief, and then a hearing will be scheduled. I believe the, uh, police department is still conducting background checks. Uh, and I would imagine those will be, uh, completed here in the very near future. Once that has happened, a public, uh, meeting will be scheduled here in the council chambers. So all of the applicants whose applications have been not, uh, have not been denied for incompleteness, uh, they'll have an opportunity then to appear here. Again, that's an open meeting. Uh, members of the public are, are certainly invited to appear. I believe it'll, is it, is that recorded, Ms. Walton?
Yes.
So if you're at home, you can also wa, follow along or watch it on YouTube. And then ultimately, the, uh, commission will, uh, make a determination through scoring who will get the, uh, three provisioning licenses that are available here in the city. Uh, the other licenses that are available, there were no applicants for those. So it's just the three provisioning licenses that, uh, I'm, I believe from that, I think there are fifteen or sixteen applicants that are vying for, uh, three licenses.
Okay. Uh, another question that I have for you concerning that was, in the beginning, when it was brought before council, even though I know Ms., me, myself, and, um, Mr. Baker, uh, didn't vote for it, and we found out later on that the medical marijuana does not bring in the revenue that we need. Because I believe we were in the red this budget, correct? Mr. Blom?
In, in the red for what?
We were, we were, uh, in a negative.
Oh, overall budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so seeing those figures and seeing that we were in a negative in the budget, my job as well as council's job is to make sure, and, uh, you know, the administration is to make sure, how do we get more revenue in so that doesn't happen again? So looking at that, recreation brings in more revenue than does medical marijuana. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, I wouldn't be able to answer that question just sitting here. I'd have to look at, um, it would be dependent on a lot of factors. How many, uh, for instance, how many licenses the city, uh, was willing to give under the circumstances? Weighing that to the, uh, application fee process. Um, I just don't, I wouldn't be able to sit here and say whether it actually would be financially beneficial. Um, it may serve as a benefit for members of the public that want to use one of those facilities. But as far as will it be financially beneficial to the city, I just am not in a position to answer that question.
Do you know your question? Uh, Ms. Walton?
Uh, yeah, a report came out from treasury, and I don't have, excuse me, these exact numbers. But rough numbers were the medical provisioning centers were about eighty-five hundred per provisioning center, while the recreational, uh, centers were about fifty-eight thousand.
Okay.
So there was a significant difference between medical and recreation.
Okay. And so if we have people that start, because the, the ordinance already passed, but if we already have it, um, going, and we want to add the recreational, how would we do that? Since it's already in place, because it's like we'll be wait, we'll be spending more, uh, taxpayers' money with you all looking at it and redoing everything over when it's already in place, and we can just move forward to doing that? How does that work?
Yeah. Uh, city council has already opted out of, uh, granting, uh, licenses for recreational marijuana. Uh, it has the option to basically opt-in and allow that. There would need to be a majority vote on the city council in order to do that. Um, so that would be an option available to council.
Okay. So it's not too late, even for the people that already apply? Do we have to go back and everybody else reapply, or we just keep the people that's already, um, that has all the criteria in there? How does that work?
Well, it's, it's two different, there, there, we don't have an ordinance that allows recreational marijuana.
Okay.
Uh, we do have an ordinance, uh, that allows medical marijuana. So there would need to be an ordinance that would need to be created to allow recreational marijuana.
And you said the difference between medical was six, sixty-eight hundred compared to fifty-eight thousand?
Fifty-eight thousand for recreational versus about eighty-five hundred for the medical.
Okay.
And that, that was for the last calendar year.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions I had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for our city attorney? Seeing none, moving right along to new business. The approval of proposal for a water main replacement along Furwood and Birchwood. Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'll motion to approve AEW engineering proposal for Birchwood Water Main Replacement from Nell's to the south end of the street, and Furwood, Furwood Water Main Replacement from Nine Mile to Tofer.
I'll second it.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Madam Mayor, sorry, before we get to that, I just had one quick question. I don't know if this was considered already. And I just came across it today as I was, uh, reviewing this again. I saw that we have another water main that was nearby. I guess basically, my question was, that, that's on our capital improvement program. Um, give me just one second. We had, uh, I guess Birchwood. Uh, maybe that's not super close, because this was between Tofer and Nine. If there was a, if there was one nearby that was on our, uh, capital improvement program, would it make sense to combine those and maybe reorder some to save, uh, costs for, uh, mobilization and stuff like that? Or, um, is that not really, uh, practical, or?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, I, I know nearby, we've got the Beechwood Water Main Replacement from Juliana to Nine Mile, which is part of the DWRF project that's currently out to bid. Um, any other projects that might be nearby? Uh, there are others that might be in the area that are on the capital improvement plan that are part of future DWRF projects within the next few years. But because it's DWRF, it's already been basically set as far as the four-year program.
Okay.
As far as costings, I don't, I don't think you would see a cost savings regardless, regardless of where, how close that project would be.
Okay, thank you. That was all.
We have motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Next item is approval of rec, of the recommendation of the planning commission to approve the special land use for the property located at two four eight five zero Grashett.
Madam Mayor, I would, uh, move to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission and approve the special land use for the property located at two four eight five zero Grashett.
Support?
Madam Mayor, if I may, real quick?
Yes.
Um, so I guess, maybe I should have motioned to table it at the beginning of the meeting because I forgot to request. I would have liked to have seen the, um, shared parking agreement. And, um, also, I did have a couple of questions, I guess, about like the, the restricting the hours of operation because I've had a lot of complaints about some of our, like, event halls in the city. And it looked like the hours were kind of late on here, like they were staying until like one AM on Friday and Saturday, and midnight during the week. And, I mean, like our noise ordinance, I believe, is like eleven o'clock during the week. So I was wondering if we could, you know, maybe consider, at least especially during the week, like restricting those times to being eleven o'clock instead of midnight, because it just seems like it's kind of late.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
The council, uh, the planning commission actually approved this use without, with, with no restrictions on hours. They were not, they did not like that. Um, they thought the noise, noise ordinance would handle any issues, but they did not want to restrict the hours. They thought this use, um, with the buffer in the parking lot, um, and they were pleased with, uh, with everything else that was there. I thought this was a, a good location, um, protecting the residents.
Oh, sorry?
Hi, Ma, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protema Lucido, uh, the, uh, planning commission did, uh, approve this special land use, uh, request, uh, subject to certain conditions, uh, one being that the shared parking agreement would be found acceptable. I'm the city attorney. Uh, that evening, I was handed a copy of a signed, uh, license agreement, uh, that covers just that. It appears to be in a form, uh, that, uh, reflects, uh, the standard form that, that is put out by, uh, the city of East Point. Uh, this agreement is dated, uh, June second, twenty twenty-two. I find the agreement to be acceptable. I'd like to show you a copy of that.
Yeah, I was just more interested on who they were sharing the parking with, to be honest.
I was able to confirm that the legal descriptions contained therein are accurate, uh, for the properties involved.
Madam Mayor, if I could, uh, comment too, while, uh, Ma, Mayor Protem's reviewing that. Uh, part of the discussion, uh, well, from what I took from it at the, uh, planning commission, was that this is, uh, regional commercial on our, uh, future land use map. Also, is it probably opposed to, like, B one, uh, not as regional of, uh, a zoning? Um, from, I believe, the different businesses that you're probably referring to. I think at least the recent ones we've heard of, uh, noise complaints. So I think that is, uh, also why they went forward, uh, with this. But again, just my opinion from listening to it, but as for the, the noise portion.
Right. And I mean, I know like a lot of times the issue is with the parking, because if they don't have adequate parking and they have a shared, um, parking agreement, a lot of times, what tends to happen is if you want to stay parking on the side streets, because the location might be two doors down, and the people aren't going to use that, that parking lot. But it looks like this is, uh, right in next door. So, um, yeah, that's fine. That's all, that's all I would have then.
I believe we got motion and support. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is item C, adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash one nine four four, committed bond balance assignments. Council?
Mayor, I'll motion that we adopt resolution twenty-two dash nineteen forty-four, identifying categories to be included in the general funds committed fund balance.
I support that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
The next item is the reappointment of mi, of the member to the Board of Ethics. And this was requested by Councilmember Baker to add the, to the agenda. And item for approval of a member reappointment to the Board of Ethics. Councilman Baker?
Yes, uh, Mr. Says, it was my appointment to the Board of Ethics. And so I will move that we reappoint him to the Board of Ethics with a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Support. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
No. Next item is the appointment to the planning commission. And this is...
It's me again.
You again.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Uh, I move that we appoint Stacy Cobb Muniz to the planning commission to fill current vacancy with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Madam Mayor, if I may, really quick, so I just, um, we have, uh, someone, there was another applicant that was interested in the planning commission, and he's attended every single planning commission meeting. Um, so, as much as I respect, um, Ms. Cobb Munz, um, I mean, and I know she's going to do a fantastic job. I do have to, I just, then I have to vote no tonight because she just, I really would have put Miss, Mr. Lubak back onto the planning commission because he's been so dedicated to it. So I just want to give my reasoning beforehand. It's nothing like against her. I think she's absolutely fantastic, and I hope she's, even gets more involved. I know we've talked about it. So, just a heads up.
Thank you, ma'am. Think we had a motion and support?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Co, Councilmember Lucido?
No.
Mayor Owens?
No. Next item is item F, discussion and possible approval on cost recovery for emergency responses. Council?
I don't know. Who put this on the agenda?
Our city. Who put this?
Maybe, maybe the, maybe the administration put one. Maybe the administration did.
We did. Thank you, Mr. Curly. Uh, Ms. Homan will take it from here. Or, Mr. Ruheeb, did you want to touch base on it?
I could talk about it real quick.
Okay.
Real quick, Mr. Rohan. I'm just playing with you.
We've been talking about this, uh, this ordinance for some time, and, uh, my former city, we adopted this, and it worked out very well. Um, the goal of this is not to, you know, collect money from every time we go to someone's home or a business, or we go on a run on the street. It's just, uh, we want to address a lot of these frivolous police and fire calls that we get, you know, basically, you can just call them negligence. Um, for instance, if someone has, uh, a non-approved bonfire, and it burns the neighbor's house down, and we have to send, you know, five firemen there and a couple of police officers, we should be able to recoup our time for our labor costs and for our equipment. Or, um, someone sets off a false alarm, a fire alarm at the school, or someone calls in or commits the act of arson or a bomb threat. That costs a lot of money on our end, and this is just a means to collect, you know, some of the money. And you may ask, there's a couple of things in here that I don't agree with. For instance, if a non-resident gets into a car accident, and it's not their fault, then this is that we can charge them. I don't agree with that. That's not the intention. However, if we have to go to your home, uh, three times in a quarter, then we would like to recoup some of our costs. There's some residents here in town, not many, but there's some. We're at their homes probably four times a week. And what that does, it takes up, use, it uses all the resources, the police resources, and sometimes fire and our EMS. And, um, it just takes people off the street.
Mr. Rohan, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
You said you don't agree with all the things that are in there. What are, what document are you referring to?
I'm, I'm reading it off from this, um, it's an old ordinance. I don't know if you had a copy of this. It should have been...
We didn't receive any materials on this item.
Okay. Well, we'll just, we'll talk about it in general. We won't talk about what's in this document, because this is from an...
So, and I had previously mentioned, I know you and I had talked outside, Councilmember DeMonaco, and these are just discussion topics to see if it's something that the council is interested in moving forward with. We have done research in terms of best practices. We have examples from other communities. As, uh, Director Ruheeb had, Ruheeb had mentioned, um, he was a part of the ordinance going in in his previous community, and that is what is, he is referencing. So it's something that's online and accessible to everyone, but we've just been researching best practices. We don't have anything for us specifically, but it would be something that we'd meet with the city attorney on before putting a first reading together.
Yes, if this is something that interests council, we can do a little bit more research. We can be real specific what we can charge on, um, and basically how it worked in my other community. If we had a run, uh, the supervisor would, would, uh, he would have a, a package in front of him. He'd just fill out a form. The form would go to the finance department for review. The finance department would mail it out. And then the, the responsible party would have to pay it. And then the, the responsible party would have to pay it, if not, it would go to collections. A lot of times, or I believe the ordinance had, we had a cap on it so we wouldn't, uh, you know, charge someone ten thousand dollars to come to their house. There would be a cap and everything would be based on fifteen-minute increments, you know, like a firefighter's pay or police officers' pay or the use of the vehicles, especially fuel. We didn't use it all the time and I don't intend on using this all the time, but it's something, it's nice to have in place in the event we have to keep going to the same homes over and over and over again. And this works well too with fireworks, you know, you have a neighbor blowing off fireworks, fireworks go on my, my, my roof, burn my house down. We're going to charge us for our costs to be there with a cap, something reasonable. But, um, this does send the message and, um, but, um, if you're interested, I can put something together more solid. And we can talk, I can get with the finance department, we can talk about costs and how we bill people for that. But again, we're not going to, my intention is not to use this all the time. And we don't want to penalize everybody for calling the police, this is just based on, we can just say negligence.
Yeah, the bonfire you were talking about earlier that turned into, you know, structured fire?
Yes.
Like who would determine that we should request costs for that?
That would be our fire department. This, this is going to benefit, actually, this, the ordinance that we had in my previous city, it benefited the fire department the most. Because they went out on bonfires or somebody would dump their hot ashes in their recycling bin and next thing you know, their garage is on fire. Then you, then you have five firefighters here from, from East Point, then you have to call Roseville or St. Clair Shores. And this can also benefit our DPW if they had to do some road closures, they had to call people in on overtime. Or if, let's say somebody was drag racing down Grashit and went into a telephone pole, same thing, we'd call the DPW out. There's cost recoveries involved with Edison and things of that nature, so.
I have, I have one, I guess, request. I mean, I would, it's something that I might be interested in, but is there any way you can maybe send over, over some examples to us to review? Um, so we have more of like an idea on kind of what it would look like before we move forward with actually coming up with our own or spending the time on doing our own.
Yes, if you're interested, uh, I will definitely put, uh, an outline together and we can put some projected costs. And again, we don't want to, you know, I don't want to make a big deal out of this thing and spend, you know, months on it and, you know, we're not going to be billing people every day. But again, it's something to have in place, you know, because we do have people here that just call us and call us and call us because they don't know how to deal with conflict.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, if we were to pass this amendment, it says to, uh, direct, uh, uh, direct the city attorney to draft an amendment. And, uh, our director of public service, uh, safety has given us a couple dozen examples. So I would hope that even though this motion says that we're directing the city attorney to do it and nothing in our motion to say that in, in partnership with our director of public safety, yes.
Oh, I just wanted to add, uh, thank you, Mr. Curly, that, um, the city, uh, does have cost recovery ordinances already on, uh, in the ordinance itself. For instance, um, uh, section two six six five deals with accident cost recovery. If there's a traffic accident, cost recovery can take place then. Uh, there's also an, uh, OWI cost recovery, uh, drunk driver causes an accident, the city can recoup the cost on something like that. And there is also a fire and hazardous materials emergency, uh, cost recovery ordinance for certain fire events. So if the council is interested in, uh, moving ahead, uh, Mr. Rohib and I could put together something, uh, that it specifically addresses the concerns of city administration. Make sure that we don't already have, uh, because we don't want to duplicate something that we already have, uh, in our ordinances and then bring that, uh, before the council. So I think the, the purpose of tonight was to have that discussion, see if there's an interest on the council to move forward with that. And if there is, then we can work on getting a draft and bring it before the council for further consideration.
Um, thank you.
So, so, Madam Mayor? Um, I would move that, that we, um, I move to direct the city attorney along with the input of our director of public safety to draft amendments to the pertinent ordinance to allow the imposition and collection of emergency service fees under specific circumstances and further to present the requested amendments to the city council review and approval at our next council meeting.
Madam Mayor, could we maybe not do it at the next meeting? Uh, a little more cushion?
I'm, I'm just reading the recommendation from the administration. Um, due the second meeting of July.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to also ask, um, director to give us some data on the non-emergencies per, that you have gotten those calls per month and what those look like. So we can know, um, what's going on and how that looks.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I, I didn't hear anybody second this.
I'll second it.
Oh.
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Item G, discussion and possible approval for civil infractions and graduated fines for code violations and failure to register rentals in vacant buildings. This is also from administration, um, starting with, do you want to go, um, assistant city manager now, not economic director anymore?
Uh, Ms. Holman? Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so actually, administration did put, uh, G, J, and K, I, those items on the agenda. Um, they are all sort of interrelated. Um, one of the biggest issues that we have here are the condition of rental properties. Um, and our team, our building department with McKenna has been doing an incredible job of, uh, really getting into these properties and following up and making sure some of the things that they have found, um, it's appalling. Um, so as it relates to, if I may just summarize the three and then if you have questions specific to each, we can do that. Um, but again, what we're trying to do is enable the building department to, uh, raise the housing standards by having the ability to, to get into the properties. Um, we have a huge issue with landlords, uh, and property owners failing to register either as a rental or as a vacant building. Um, and so this, um, was, it was discussion with the, the court administrator, um, with this busy docket that the court has. Right now, things are, I believe, a civil, the city attorney and I spoke, a civil infraction then become a misdemeanor. Um, this would be a, a fine for, for one, uh, for one item. Uh, it would be a civil infraction and a fine. If they wanted to come in and pay the fine, for instance, at the court but didn't want to register, they would then be issued a second civil infraction with a higher fine. And then at that point, if they still fail to register, which, which happens frequently when the landlords or the property owners know that the, the property is not up to standard, it's not up to code. So at that point, it would become a misdemeanor. Um, the advantages that everybody would know, uh, the court would know that they have had several bites of the apple and chances to rectify the situation. Um, it would lighten the, the court's docket, uh, and then give more teeth to both the building department and the court. Um, this also goes as it relates to J with the point of sale inspections. And then changing under item K, um, the language from rental housing to non-owner occupied housing, which then encompasses more situations.
Any questions?
So, okay. Um, this is, so we're basically, you're talking about. You're talking about G, J, and K right now, is that correct?
Overall, yes, but I can answer specific questions.
Okay, because I like, like, what you were talking about, like the, the civil infraction part, but like the point of sale of, is a separate, I mean, that's in here later, we can talk about that part later, right?
Sure.
Or, no, it's not.
Yes, it is a separate item. It's item J.
Okay, yes, and that is fine, okay. All right. And I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, the discussion is to move forward with having administration look at some of these, uh, fees and things like that. So we can, and our attorney, to look at decriminalizing some of these, uh, attorney Albright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back in, uh, twenty twenty, uh, city administration went through, uh, the city's codes and decriminalized a lot of the different sections that, for the most part, everything, every violation was a misdemeanor. And, uh, so city administration went through and did a graduated fine and penalty schedule. So on a lot of cases, uh, first infraction would be a civil infraction, it would not be criminal in nature. Person would have the opportunity of paying a fine and that would be the end of it. If they continue to violate the city's code and ordinances within a twelve-month time period, then a second offense within that time period is now elevated up to a misdemeanor. So essentially, the first time was a slap on the wrist, so to speak. Uh, the second time would be more serious, uh, would be a misdemeanor, carry a possible penalty of five hundred dollars and or ninety days in jail. Uh, what Ms. Holman and I spoke about with regard to, uh, failure to register rentals and failure to register, uh, property under the vacant building ordinance is that currently those are, those are misdemeanors. Person is cited, uh, they have to come into court and then they go through the whole process. Oftentimes, they'll, uh, take a plea, uh, just to get it done, but they're not correcting the, what the city wants is compliance. They want to get these properties registered as rentals, they want to get these vacant properties registered under the vacant property registration ordinance. And so what Ms. Holman, uh, and I discussed today was rather the first time be a misdemeanor, the first time would be a civil infraction. Hopefully that would get people's attention that, okay, I don't want to pay out X amount of dollars anymore. But I also don't have the, uh, criminal component to that where they may be not inclined to, um, resolve it on the front end because of the criminal nature of it. And, uh, a second offense would also be a civil infraction, but the fine would go, uh, much higher. And then if there was a third offense with a cer- within a certain time period, then that would then, uh, qualify as a misdemeanor. So that was something that we, uh, we talked about today. We could, uh, we can, with assistance of city administration, we can put something together and bring it before the council for, that way you can actually see it on paper, if that's something that the councils are interested in.
Council, do you think about any comments?
Sure, one comment. I, I think just in general, I, I guess after discussing these items a little bit and trying to think about this, this is all just so vague, it's hard to even understand. I mean, this motion says draft amendments to the pertinent ordinances, I mean, we don't even have the ordinances in front of us. I mean, this is so vague, it's like, I don't even really understand quite what we're approving. I should have been more specific than this to, to come to a, uh, discussion at the city council table.
Um, Ms. Walton?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I'll touch on that again, uh, these are points of discussion to see if there is something that the council is interested in. Um, if we put together the time between Mr. Albright, Ms. Holman, myself, the judge, the court administrator, Director Ruheeb, and I'll put these together, amended all the ordinances that this ordinance would be referenced in and come to the council table after we spent all of that time for council to not be interested in it, would be a waste of resources. So administration's perspective was to bring it forward, see if it's something that council wants to move forward with and it's something that we're going to invest in. And if it is, we'd move forward and have those meetings. So this is not a first reading by any means, it's a discussion for interest of where we'd like to go and our recommendations of the ordinances that should be changed. And if council's interested, we can move forward, we can have those meetings and we can make the adjustments to the ordinances. If council's not interested, then we will not invest the time to move forward.
Right, Ms. Walton, I, yeah, I understand that, I think there's got to be a happy medium here. I mean, we have no information and then department has a reading off of stuff that city council doesn't even have. So I don't even know how, on the fly, we're just supposed to respond and motion, but I, I guess that's just, uh, my personal opinion.
So I guess like moving forward, you're just looking for, um, a motion by council to move forward with coming up with a possible amendment? I mean, yeah, right, I mean, I.
Um, Ms. Albright?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lucido, it would be, for this particular discussion item, it would be just amending, uh, the fail to register rental property and the failure to register under the city's vacant buildings property, just those two ordinance sections for purposes of this discussion item. Decriminalizing those two sections.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, motion and second, I want to add something also. When do we put all this information together on, we receive it on a Friday? If, uh, council has any questions, I know, um, in the past, we a- asked those question. So if you didn't receive the things that you needed to do further research or make a, um, a positive decision, then I suggest emailing the city manager for those items so that we can, uh, move forward. Is that something?
Mayor, I get, I understand how it works, even if I ask questions, everything's already included on Friday and then it's too late, so to include more information.
Okay. So when we have discussions, I guess, a couple of items that we can refer to. I know you've been doing that in the past, so this is just a discussion. And most discussions are, sometimes we have information, sometimes we're just talking about it, so. Um, moving right along, we have motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Okay.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item is item H, discussion and possible approval for citywide yard sale. This is brought up by our councilwoman.
Councilwoman Lucido?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the last few years, we have done the citywide yard sale and I know people have been starting to ask about it again. So I just wanted to bring it to council so we can move forward with, you know, allowing people to have the citywide yard sale. Again, it doesn't cost the city any money and it's a great, you know, something that people look forward to and they don't have to, we're all coming to city hall and pulling in, uh, permit that weekend to do their yard sales. So that's always nice for the residents, so. Yeah, I'll make a motion in accordance with sections thirty-two dash eighty-one and thirty-two dash eighty-five of the code of ordinances to designate the third weekend of August, August nineteenth through twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, as citywide garage sale days in the city of East Point.
Support.
Motion and support, any conversation on this? Say none? Uh, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
We have table item I, we want to item J, discussion and possible approval of point of sale inspections for residential properties. Assistant City Manager, Ms. Holman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yes, again, this is focused on, um, some of the practices that are being, uh, done by, uh, owners of rental properties in the city. Um, often, if they get a, uh, a violation or some sort of a notice, they will transfer the property to a, a different quote unquote owner. Um, so really, again, this is not the legitimate sales, um, buyers also will have the opportunity to waive that inspection. Um, but in situations, this also would cover, um, the problem that we are having with land contracts that are, uh, actually very, um, pro the, the vendor and against the land contract vendor who sometimes thinks it's more of a lease. Uh, again, trying to keep the condition of the properties, um, not only stable but moving up. Uh, it's more about the, the ability to get, to get in and be able to, uh, inspect the properties so that people are not living in substandard conditions.
Council?
So, yeah, Madam Mayor, um, this is not something I'm, I mean, I understand the reason for wanting to do it. But I know like when my husband and I bought our first home, it needed work and if the owners would have had to bring it up to code to, and pay for an inspection because the, the people had inherited it and they lived out of state. Um, so the travel time and things like that, they would have sold the house for more money and we wouldn't have been able to even afford to buy the house. But we were capable of doing the work ourselves in the house to do what needed to be done. So I would hate to take that away from other people. I would hate to, like, increase the price of having to pay for these inspections and then the seller is going to be recouping the cost for these inspections at the cost of the buyer, so I don't know, I, it's something I'm probably not really interested in.
I think I share my, uh, my concerns such as yours, uh, councilwoman, to add additional fees to the, the sellers of property. I think they're going to put that additional fee on the buyer and a lot of people who are buying homes, they have to pay for the home inspection, then they will have to pay for the city inspection. A lot of people don't have that type of money. A lot of people don't have that type of money. And so we want to make sure that people, we already have affordable housing, and that's another reason why we have that, is because people don't have those down payment fees to pay. And so, and I just want to kind of diminish that, those additional costs for people getting into homes.
Anyone else would like to speak on this?
Nothing except to say I concur with the two comments, that I'm, I'm not prepared or ready to increase the fees.
But we can come back to this on a, and also if you have data and information on properties such as this where we have a problem with, and I like to see what we're going against and things like that. So what, I, I understand that, the issues at hand, but I want to see how many issues are we dealing with here to make it, to start adding fees. Now, if it's getting crazy with these homes and properties are being messed up, and then like let's go with it. But we don't want to start, you know, charging people for selling their homes, and a lot of people are selling their homes too because, for different purposes. People are getting these homes because they, they don't have a home to live in. And so again, like Councilwoman said, and I stated earlier, we don't want to add fees to people trying to get in, get in housing. That's why we have Habitat for Humanity and our affordable housing area. So if you're going to move right along, and hopefully, again, if you bring up that data and let us know why we should do this and bring it back for us to see, I appreciate that. Next item is item K, is discussion and possible approval of non-owner occupied properties. Chapter 10, Article 3, rental housing. Back to you again, Ms. Holman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this is a change mostly in the definition. This is the best practice, as are the other discussion items that we brought up in other communities. When something is labeled as a rental housing, it is very easy to wiggle around that to avoid registering and having the inspections by saying it's a family member who's not paying rent. This would also cover the problem we have with the land contracts with a buyer who is not aware of what property should and should not, what condition they should and should not be in. So it gives the building department, it expands the, the properties that they will be able to, to inspect to ensure that they are up to code.
Council?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with changing this.
Now what that looks like again, Ms. Holman? The rental, just having people make sure they certify their property as a rental, pretty much?
This actually would expand the properties that would fit by calling it non-owner occupied.
Okay.
It expands the definition to include some of the situations that, that we have found to be very tricky and resulting in really deteriorating properties, again, because they're trying to avoid the inspection and the registration. So it's really just, it's changing the definition to, to encompass more types of properties.
Right.
Residential.
And hold the landlords accountable, correct, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
If I could just add, this is, this has been a problem over the last 10 years. You have certain individuals who take advantage of people, and they have them sign a document and they represent that it is a rental agreement, and it actually is a land contract. And they do not realize that they're signing a land contract. And so, once that's signed, then the person selling it on land contract does not need to register the property pursuant to the city's rental registration program. With this change in the language, that will eliminate that practice of certain property owners. So it certainly is the, I believe other cities have moved in that direction as well, Ms. Holman, and it would, I see that as a great benefit for people that are actually renting homes here in the city.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could ask a question? Um, how, I mean, isn't, if someone has a land contract, I mean, I think this, this question has literally come up in show cause hearings, aren't, aren't they not the owner? How it even changing this? We could specifically write the ordinance to say, if it's a land contract, do this or that? I mean, because aren't, aren't they the owner? I mean, I, I know there's one specific person for sure that comes to mind that's come here before, and he's sitting up here, he's done a land contract with something, someone, so he, he no longer owns it. You know, person A is the person who sold it to person B. Person A here is talking about the property, but person B is supposed to be the owner. So I'm like, what are you doing here? Isn't person B the owner? And so we're caught in this thing where we're talking to someone who's not even the owner. I frankly think he shouldn't even have been able to speak at some of those hearings, and maybe we did fix that. But changing the wording is going to be able to get us to, I don't know, fix is the right word, to, to look at these land contract properties then?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Actually, no, the, the non-occupied is not going to cover the land contracts. The vendee is going to, to be the owner of the property. That would be the purpose of the point of sale ordinance, where then they would, it would have to have been inspected. And at the time of the point of sale, again, the point of that was really to protect unsuspecting buyers, AKA land contract holders who may not even know that they are. That would be covered under that section. And again, it's something that buyers could waive, such as Councilmember Lucido and her husbands, obviously savvy, savvy buyers and would know what they were, what they were doing. So that's that part. But this would cover, we have a, we have a number of landlords, Mr. Albright, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a number of landlords who say it was just a family member living there, or I'm not getting rent, when we know full well that they, they actually are getting rent. So this expands from, you know, the typical rental to, to other situations where somebody else is in the property.
So I have a question. So the land contract one, or the point of sale one, I should say, can we do that just for land contracts would be my first question, even though we already, you know, we didn't vote on it, but that would be my first question. But yeah, so we're just changing basically the way it's written now in this ordinance from rental to non-owner.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I don't know if you have answered my other question about the land contract.
You, we could have that language just so it covers land contracts.
Okay, then, then, then that might change my opinion, though.
Yeah, these, these ordinances kind of go hand in hand because the certain individuals, the games that they play, they trick people into entering into line contract situations. They also will move, you know, you know, a family number or something like that in the property, as Ms. Holman stated. I mean, the city administration has seen all sorts of different examples to try to get around. Basically, the, the whole intent of the rental registration ordinance is to, for the benefit of the public. And this will, you know, at least stand an end-all, be-all, but it surely will, you know, move in the right direction.
Council, I know you said you agree with it. Did you want to make a motion, Councilwoman?
Yeah, so I can make the motion to direct the city administration to draft amendments permanent to the ordinances to meet best practices and further be present the request amendments for city council review and approval for the next city council meeting.
Second, I'll second it.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Next item, item L, is approval of the 2021 parks, $3,500. I'll let our Councilwoman explain that a little bit more, Councilwoman.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, a few years ago, city administration approved or an event for the Parks Commission, and it's a, this concert in the park. Then COVID hit and it got postponed. But after reviewing it and thinking more about it, the Parks Commission is the one that kind of planned this event along, like I said, the city administration did, you know, approve the, it was, it's already been paid for. So I guess what I think, though, is we don't have a line item in our budget for the Parks Commission, because when we developed the Parks Commission, it was for them to kind of access our parks, bring back to council what they thought was important that needed to be done in the parks. And then when we were doing budget, we could prioritize those items and try to get those done in our budget or plan for the future to have those things done in our budget. But they came up with this idea to hold this event, but we never really like kind of seen them as doing events, so we never really like established a Parks Commission budget. But because this is already done and administration paid for it, I think it's important to make sure we add that line item to the 21, 22 budget. So my motion would be to, to amend the 21, 22 budget to add a line item for the Parks Commission for the amount of $3,500.
Support.
Any questions with that, Council?
Sure, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How, how does this get approved? I mean, so like we're saying, the Parks Commission doesn't even have a budget. How on earth does this even get through then? Don't we have layers, checks, and balances, Mr. Blum? How, how do we just, $3,500 for a, for a concert, just get through?
The invoice was presented to the department head who approved it. It was not charged to, like the commission line item was just charged into parks. There was budget to cover it in a different line item. So there was nothing that would have red flagged that particular item. There was, there's more behind the story as far as how it was presented and everything, but from a, an approval standpoint, it was approved into an area that it shouldn't have been approved in, I guess. But there was budget to cover the payment at that time.
Yeah, to me, if I could follow Mr. Blum, yeah, yeah, to me, I guess it's just, I guess should be allocated to somewhere in the Parks Department budget and not like a, you know, we go backwards and make up a $3,500 budget for Parks Commission, which right now we have, you know, $0. There is no line item for the Parks Commission whatsoever. Yeah, that's my opinion.
So, so, yeah, I guess that's one thing, too, and I don't know, like, I know, like, each board and commission has like different liaisons from the city, but like moving forward, if they want, if the Parks Commission wants to plan events, I think that, well, first of all, they, they might be able to find some sponsors to offset the cost. Secondly, I think we just need to make sure that the commission itself in the future has a budget. We approve that budget when we do our budget for them instead of kind of doing this like backwards. So that was my only thing.
Who's the liaison for the Parks Commission up there?
I am now, but this was something that started a couple years ago, actually. The, the whole thing about having this event in the park, it was pre-COVID. So it's kind of a, I think picking up where they left off back then.
And when, when this originally, I mean, I did express my concerns to administration because I was the, the actual liaison at the time of this, but then, like I said, because COVID hit and everything kind of got canceled, I think it just kind of gotten forgotten about until, and now I'm not on the Parks Commission, and we switched liaisons to the Parks Commission, so there wasn't, you know, any communication, you know, there, so.
I think we have motion and support. Am I correct?
I-
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Okay, going to pay the bills.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of $2,326,648.79.
Second that.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item is the second hearing of the public, so this, so those that did not get to speak at the first hearing of the public, you have the opportunity to speak this time. So I start timing you after you say your name and residency, if you're a visitor or not, so that gives you, that doesn't take away your time. So the second hearing of the public is now open. Anyone allowed to speak? Say none.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and the members of the board. I have a couple of concerns with the no-left turn eastbound Grashit coming in there. It's a no-turn. I got stopped and warned for making that turn. I have been doing it quite often. I finally got stopped. That's a main artery there, and to drive over to Crusade, or drive over to Hayes and drive back to Grashit to get in there, that's ludicrous. Is there some way that they could put a sign there for residents to turn other than a no-left turn? And the garbage trucks, people are putting loose garbage, papers, sale paper, paper plates and stuff of that nature, and it's litter when it's, when the wind is high especially. And they need to do something to send notices to the people, because you can't go out talking to neighbors now. You're going to get in trouble. And we got a lot of new neighbors moving in, and it's a problem. Basketball rims and what have you, and going down the street bouncing the ball that's echoing through the house, it doesn't make sense. It needs to be addressed. And the firecracker shooting, they shoot off firecrackers. They have to wait till they get dogged. They'd be out shooting firecrackers till 11:30, 12, and after 12 o'clock at night. It's a problem. We don't need to hear that. And could you please do something for it? I thank you.
You have more time, sir?
I'll finish.
Oh, you were finished? I'm going to give you a whole three minutes. You don't have to worry about that.
Hi, hi, everybody.
How you doing?
When he talked about the basketball rim, because I know when I moved over here, you couldn't have that rim in the middle of the street. Like he stated about the new neighbors, they had the rim in the middle of the street, and we have trucks and cars, not only ours, but other people, and the ball was just constantly hitting the people vehicle. They was all on the grass. They was all sitting on the curb. They were just doing a whole lot of stuff. And just like he said, you can't really say nothing to these people right now. I came out on my porch and I kind of like asked some of them, could you please get off my grass? Could you please stop hitting his truck? And they kind of like looked at me, so that was the look, and I just went back in the house. But I'm glad he wasn't there, though, but that's it. So I, well, no, it ain't. I just want to know, do they still have that little thing going on where you can't have a rim in the middle of the street? So that's my thing now.
We'll look that up. Thank you for it. Those comments and concerns, we're taking notes. Our city manager is working her hand over here writing down notes, and so am I, and it's all recorded. So thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Say none. The second hearing of the public is now closed. Going to Mayor and Council report, starting with Councilman DeMonaco.
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, I hope everyone had a happy Father's Day, that's a father out there. And then also, nice Juneteenth, and then looking forward also to Independence Day coming up. The Beautification Commission had their electronics recycling event, and a ton of people came out, so thanks to everybody that came out to that and recycled their electronics instead of throwing them in the garbage and ending up in landfills. Actually, there were way more electronics than I thought. I think we kind of like 80 cars and, you know, it was a massive amount of, of stuff. It was impressive. So thank you, everybody. And then had a good joint planning commission and ZBA training the other day. I think it was especially very good for the newer members that haven't been on the commissions very long to kind of see what one commission does and, and the other commission does. And actually, frankly, we've never done, as far as I know, at least since I've been here, training with both together like that, so it was good to see and good to, for all of them to get to meet each other in person since, you know, that hasn't happened much in the last couple of years also. So I think that was very good, a little refresher for the older people on the commission, or at least the people that have been on the commission longer, I should say. And I think, oh, sir, about the litter, for sure, I can at least answer that question. Everyone should be using bags. You're not supposed to fill the, the cans directly with garbage. Now going about talking to your neighbors, of course, as you said, is a little bit different. Maybe, maybe the city can help by sending a notice or something if you want to maybe reach out with who you think the specific addresses are or something, or reach out to me or something. Maybe we can figure something out and talk to some neighbors and try to resolve that. Nobody wants a bunch of, bunch of litter all up and down their street, so that's all. Madam Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Curly, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few things. First of-
First of all, I want to give you a quick report on our twenty-third annual Cruise and Greshit. It was a great event. We had a Thursday, Friday and Saturday, but of course Saturday was a big day. We had over a hundred and twenty-five classic cars that registered and great fun, great fun. And there are so many people that I could name that were actually on the board, but suffice to say that some of us have been working on this since nineteen ninety-nine and God willing, will be on there another, another ten or fifteen years. We'll see. But there are some people who helped us out greatly and I'm, I'm gonna name the organization so that they get credit as well. The East Point Police Department, the East Point Police Reserves, Michigan State Police, Macomb County Sheriff's, St. Clair Shores Department, Police Department, Sterling Heights Police Department, Center Line Police Reserves, DPW Director and Public Works Team, Library Director and Library Team, McKenna and Associates, and all members of the administration. Thank you so much. And as I, I think I repeated two or three times that our grand marshal was a, just a twelve-year-old, he corrected me. I kept telling people he was thirteen and he says, Harvey, I'm twelve. So Dominic Miller, as I told you, he collected two thousand, seven hundred pair of pajamas last year and this year his goal is four thousand pair of pajamas to give to the needy. So we, we, we pray for his health particularly and we hope that, we hope that the little fellow can, can make that. My other report is, I love giving the library report. I'm the liaison for the library and I, I guess, wouldn't it be swell if we could use one council meeting each where each one of us could report on the committee that we're liaisons of? That would be great. So I'm gonna tell you what's happening at our beautiful library. They have a solar system that grant was written by Todd and Kim Holman. Don't even know exactly what the, how much the grant is gonna be for, but they're excited to get that installed whenever it comes. So they'll be able to save a lot of money on electricity. They are ordering a soundproof pod. Now, soundproof pod, they're either gonna get a single-person pod or a four-person pod. And the single-person pod looks a lot like the old Superman telephone booths, if you recall those. And you're gonna be able to go in there and study. You'll be able to go in there and talk to people on your cell phone or whatever. And then the four-person pod, you can, of course, come there and have a meeting and it's all soundproof. And the single pod will be here in about four to five, four to five weeks. So we're excited, we're excited about that. And I want to talk about the, the youth service. The youth service department enjoyed several programs this month. They celebrated Star Wars Day on May fourth, built and painted birdhouses and played board games. A new club has started for teens, Magic in the Gathering, where they can come together and play the card games. Hopefully this will become a popular event after the school is out, so. And one last thing on the report is that I've told, I've mentioned this a lot of times, but we need to have you bring your bottles and cans over to the library because they, they cash them in and the Friends of the Library uses it for an array of different things and events that they have in the library. So if you have, you know, you've got, you've got ten cans and you say, no, I want to go to the store and cash them in, I need the dollar. Well, Friends of the Library needs that dollar more than you do. So just pack them up, call me, I'll drive over to your house and pick them up. I've done that before. So give me your cans and bottles. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Baker.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to Mr. Kirk Lee, who's retiring. I got to meet him a couple of times over at the fire department. So we always, I'm always appreciative of people who put their lives on the line to make sure that we're safe if we need them. Congratulations to the new officer who was sworn in. I was here with Councilman DeMonico, so we got to witness that and found out that he was a very highly educated and list just kept going on and on with all the things he, he had a degree in. I think he started when he was like five or something because he was so young. But, and then to the promotion for Mr. Ignis, I hope I pronounced that right. I met him about five years ago, very polite gentleman, very down-to-earth and he's just always been that way anytime we've ever crossed paths. So I'm, I'm happy about that. Also, I was told in regards to the affordable housing area with the speeding and all of that, that those roads are private roads. So that might have to be addressed with whoever's, I don't know if I want to say it right, in charge of that complex. Yeah, thank you. Trying to find a word. But so that may be an avenue that, that can get something done about that. Also, this Thursday is the Gleaners Distribution over at, I always call it Kelly Middle School, but that's because I've been around too long. But East Point Community Middle School off of Ten Mile and Kelly, that starts at nine thirty AM and that's this Thursday. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I will start out for the residents that spoke about the basketball on the street. We do have an ordinance in section twenty-eight dash one-twenty-one that does not allow you to play basketball on the street. So if it is becoming a nuisance, you can file a report, you know, for that and they will probably come out and address that situation for you. The last thing we want is to see anyone get hurt or essentially damage being done to properties, so. I would like to thank all the hard work and dedication of the Greshit Cruise Committee. I thought the cruise was a great event this year. You guys ordered the right weather. I appreciate that. I hope you order the right weather again next year for the cruise because it made it a lot more enjoyable and not getting rained on. So thank you. And I hope all of you had an opportunity to do something for Juneteenth yet on Sunday. I know there was a lot of great events and throughout Macomb County, so hopefully everyone got out and got to join some of the wonderful events that were going on. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and concerns. And everyone out there, I want to say thank you to the people that put in the work so many years and that they're leaving us. So we're gonna miss you. And those that are coming and joining our family, welcome to the East Point family. Ms. Holman is our, has already been a part of this family. So now you, we totally adopted you now, so you can't go anywhere. And I'm gonna tag what our city manager said about you earlier. You have did a lot of work for the city of East Point. You do the cleanups. A lot of our administration comes out, does the cleanups, even our director and DPW staff. You don't get paid for those days and you come. Even when we did our artwork over there in the child's, the children's garden, I was like, you're here on a Saturday, you know we're not paying you right. And you were there and you put a lot of investment in this city and we thank you and the promotion was well-deserved. We couldn't give you the promotion because we haven't hired her yet, though. So once we hired her, you know, so, because both of you are amazing and we, we are thankful to have you both. And we also thankful to have our new officer and so many other people that happen to join the East Point family. So I said that to say, I won't be here because I will be going to Harvard, so I'm gonna miss you all. But I definitely will bring back some information and resources to the city of East Point, going to Harvard. So I'll be there. I was giving that scholarship through SEMCOG and I got that scholarship and I believe that was twenty-twenty. And when I just became mayor, so probably two, late two thousand nineteen, early twenty-twenty, and became the first mayor of the city to give, get that scholarship to go to Harvard and probably either the first or the second elected official in the county to get that. So I'm very happy to represent the city of East Point. When I go down there, I know some people are gonna say, East Point, where? Because I know Georgia has a East Point. And I tell them, stop getting confused. But East Point, Michigan is one that people will see in a positive light. And I want to make sure I bring those resources, grants and things like that and make you guys proud. So I'm happy about that. And hopefully this upcoming year that one of you all will apply for that scholarship as well, so we can keep the education and resources flowing through the city of East Point. I said that to say, so we want to move forward. And I had a quick question for our city, city manager. Do we have code enforcement on the weekends?
We've had conversations with McKenna in regards to scheduling weekends and after-hours just based on some of the ordinances that have been put in place. So it's something we have to do with scheduling with McKenna.
Okay, I think that would be, that would help with the basketball rims in the middle of the street. And even on my street, we have certain, you know, new people moving in and they don't know about the ordinances and things like that. The, the neighborhoods change. I had a resident not too long ago park her car on her grass. I said, what's really going on? So, and so we have code enforcement out there that would take away so many things that you see in, in our community. And it keeps a safety, you know, a safety net between us going to another neighbor, saying certain things with people not getting so hostile. So that might be something that we can think about bringing on the weekends or something like that and making sure that people feel safe in their community that they invested in for many years. And also educate our new residences and because everybody is not trying to make us feel uncomfortable. Sometimes people just don't know. So I said that to say, we have a closed session and then we're gonna have adjournments. So you all don't have to stay because we're going to a closed session with our, for our city attorney review and then our city manager review. And so can I get a motion to go on closed session?
So move.
Support.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you for that addition. I got motion and support with that addition with our city attorney just added. Please call the roll, please.
Councilmember McCurley.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucio.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
One now.
Maybe ten minutes?
Oh, I was gonna go right in.
I'm gonna be way down here.
Yeah.
I just want to put you, um...
Will you check with Ray and see if she's ready?
Your microphone's on, please.
Are you ready?
Now let me get in here.
Oh.
You're aiming for the steps, you can be the first one over there.
Okay, she's ready. We are back from close...
Uh, cleaned up on aisle three.
Right. We are back, uh, from closed session. And, um, we are going to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
What time is that?
It's ten twenty-nine.
We're adjourned in the meeting at ten twenty-nine, alright.
We're adjourned in the meeting at ten twenty-nine. And we have motion, we have support, correct? Please.
I did.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Everybody.
Please call the roll, please.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, y'all happy tonight?